Everyone, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It is so great to see such a full room. So welcome, everyone in the room. Welcome to those of you at home. Today is Wednesday, June 8th. Welcome to our regular Bangor School Committee meeting. It is seven, it's a little past seven, actually, so we'll go ahead and get started. So if you would please join me for the pledge. Thank you. So we have some recognitions. First, we have the 2022 Maine Science Fair first place winners. Superintendent Tager.
Thank you, Chair Huston. The Bangor School Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize the 2022 Maine Science Fair first place winners. Environmental science category Ivy Roy, grade seven, JFDS, clearing bad air. Life science category Charlotte Reed, grade eight, JFDS, how does aromatherapy affect daphnia? Physical science category Riley Bosco, grade seven, JFDS, do blue light glasses really work? Engineering and computation category Abigail Karen, grade six, WSCS, a look into the future through limiting our pollution. Grand award Broadcom Masters nominee Charlotte Reed, grade eight, JFDS, how does aromatherapy affect daphnia? Okay, at this point, I'd like to invite up Teacher Tracy Vassilia and also Margaret Pytrick. They are dedic- if you'll come up to the front, two teachers. I just want to say that these are amazing awards and your dedication for excellence is a big part of what's happened. So I want to thank you both personally for all that you do. If you would like to talk a little bit, if you're willing to, about the students, and then I'm going to ask the school committee to come up front here, and also the principals. Principal Hackett and Principal Miss Brenner will stand up front with the school committee and shake hands when we call the students up. So if you'll read and then I'll give you the certificates. Yes, I hear she's here too. Carrie Thurman, please come on up. Carrie, I thank you as well for all that you do. I've visited your classroom often, so thank you.
Dove into their science fair projects with outstanding results. About two years ago, the Maine Maths and Science Alliance has been trying to grow the middle school science and engineering fair. This year, they had 10 schools, going from Wayne Fleet in Portland all the way to Orno Middle School, and Doughty and Cohen stood out. So you already kind of went through the different categories and who won, but I do want to say that in physical science, we did get third place as well. Environmental science, we got, we swept the category for second and third. Life science, we got two places, and the grand prize winner, of course, first, second from Cohen, and sixth place. So that was fantastic. All right. At this time, we'd like to ask the top winners to come up and just describe, briefly describe their, their projects.
Margaret, did you want to say anything?
Yes.
Okay.
I also wanted to point out that only the top 10% go on to be nominated to the Broadcom Masters, and that three of those are from the Bangor School District, I mean, department. That's really an accomplishment. And we ran it a little differently at William Cohen. It was an after-school program, and it was completely up to the students. So I know that Abby from William Cohen, it was completely up to her. She's not in my regular seventh and eighth grade classes. She's a sixth grader. So there was a lot of at-home and accomplishment on her own. So it was a little different, but it's still great accomplishments across the entire district.
Thank you, all three of you, for your leadership. If you'll stand up front with the school committee members, and we will call the students to come up one by one. Okay, award winners. Riley Bosco. Ivy Roy. Charlotte Reed.
Good evening, and it's my pleasure to recognize Abby Karen from William S. Cohen School.
Actually, I can fit you all. Ed, if you can stand at the end of the line. Fantastic. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
If they'd like, sure. If they'd like to, sure.
So my project was, do blue light glasses actually work? And so I got my idea because in 2020, a lot of people were on screens because quarantine, and they started using blue light glasses. And I was wondering if they actually did work, or was it a money-making scam? So my hypothesis was that my two prescription glasses I tested would be higher because they would have been made by professionals, and the two store-bought ones would have been higher, sorry, because they weren't made by professionals. So the conclusion or the end was that the store-bought glasses were actually higher, or had a lower lux, which is better than the higher lux. And, but what I found out in the end is that none of them work 100%, and that they don't fully block all the blue light, and they work differently. Like, some of them may have been a lower lux, and others may have been a higher lux. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So my project was all about, like, clearing bad air. And I got the idea was, the way I got the idea was, I, we have, like, a lot of alo plants at my house, and we've always had them, like, ever since I was, like, really little. And they have healing properties, and since global warming is, like, bad, I was wondering if they would have any effect on, like, smog or pollution. So I put, like, an aloe plant in a bin that had, like, smog in it, and another bin that just had, like, the simulated smog. And the bin with, like, the aloe plant, the smog was significantly lower every 10, after every 10-minute increment than the bin without the yellow.
Thank you.
So my project was an apple transportation system for bikes. And this stemmed off of that we have apple trees in our front yard. And so it was really complicated to try to get the apples from either the tree to the field or the tree to our house, depending on the season. And because, because bags continually broke, and I couldn't transport them easily. And I tried boxes, but they weren't working for me either because they couldn't stay to my bike or anything like that. So I made a basket that connects to my bike to, and has a ramp for the apples, so that they can, it can safely transport the apples. And it limits the pollution of tractors and agriculture transportation systems, and also limits the cost of them.
Thank you.
My project was about daphnia, which is a clear water crustacean that's clear, so you can measure heartbeats. That makes it a good test subject for when measuring, when testing out, like, health, health benefits of, like, drinks and foods and stuff. I've got this project idea because I, I use aromatherapy a lot at my house, and I also competed in the invention convention, and I used aromatherapy in that, too. So I, how I conducted my project was, I took the daphnia, and I used a pipette, and I put it in a Petri dish, and then I put it under, I, and then I spread the cover of the Petri dish with my selected choice of essential oils. I then let it sit for five minutes, and then I put them under the microscope to see how their heartbeats reacted. The conclusion was, they do affect the heartbeats, but it doesn't affect it, like, how it affects humans. The daphnia has the effect on, the daphnia heart slows down from, with all the essential oils, but usually, human heart rates, like, speed up with a specific oil, peppermint oil that I use, but it's still slowed down compared to my control variable. So my conclusion was that they do affect the heartbeats, but not in the way they affect humans. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes a lot of courage to come up in front of everyone and speak, so thank you all so much. So next, we have our STEM student award winners.
The Bangor School Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize STEM first-place winners. Main Street, Maine State Science Fair, Cuthbert Stedman, grade 11, creating a low-cost, non-invasive blood glucose monitoring and automatic insulin injection system with an artificial neural network and raspberry pi. Cuddy attended the International Science and Engineering Fair in Atlanta, Georgia in May. Northern New England Junior Research and Humanity Symposium, Michaela Kendall, grade 12, the application of clay filtration tablets in remediating the effects of industrial emissions in the Penjoak Stream in Maine. Michaela attended the JSHS in Albuquerque, New Mexico in April. Maine Stockham Junior Water Prize, Alexander Busco, grade nine, microplastics using oil's density to extract these tiny toxins from water. Alex will be attending the National Stockholm Junior Water Prize in Colorado in June. Maine Biogenius, William Shu, grade 11, a novel approach for early detection of Alzheimer's disease, developing an AlexNet convolutional neural network enhanced by class activation mapping. William will be attending the International Biogenius in San Diego, California in June. I'd like to bring up Dr. Barbara Stewart. Barbara, it appears that you have made an impact across the entire United States. So I also thank you for your dedication for excellence. If you would like to talk a little bit about your students, and then I would ask the school committee to come up, and Principal Butler will pass out some certificates.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you. I really appreciate this opportunity. And I say, what a great night to be here, because I get to hear about all these great science projects. It's like we're speaking my language tonight. So congratulations to Doughty and Cohen. Really look forward to working with students as they're moving up through. So I would just like to say STEM is strong at, in the Bangor School Department, and STEM is growing. So I'm very pleased to hear about that. We have four students here that are representing the state, regional, and national level, and they're one of many, which is, which is phenomenal, is to see this program grow and to continue to grow. In addition to the, these four science awards, there's also a strong engineering program, things like the Windstorm Challenge, winning engineering awards of that, a robotics team that has exploded over the past year. So we're really pleased with all of the work that they represent. So in terms of projects, should we do the similar, have the students-
Sure, be happy to hear that.
Happy to hear from Cuddy. Do you want to talk first a little bit about, about your project?
Okay, so my project involved diabetes, growing international crisis. And basically, one of the main problems with diabetes is that it's too costly for many developing nations because there are recurring costs upwards of $300 every single year just for the basic level of care, and this is painful and invasive. So my goal was to develop a device that could monitor glucose levels and inject insulin simultaneously to help people around the world with this debilitating disease. I was able to create a computer-based sensor that was only $50 for a permanent purchase with no recurring costs. So that was my project.
Alex is here to talk about his Stockholm Junior Water Prize. Alex is a freshman. Last year, he was a rising star at Doughty. So we're glad to have him part of, part of the high school. Take it away.
So microplastics and water are a huge issue. And in 2019, a scientist demonstrated that microplastics in water will bond to oil because both are non-polar. And so the scientist was also able to add iron filings to the oil and microplastics in the water to create a ferrofluid. And by using a magnet, he was able to extract the oil, the iron filings, and therefore the microplastics. And so I looked to simplify this process by eliminating the need for iron filings by using the, by utilizing the density of oil. So in essence, I added oil to a sample of water, and I was able to drain the water out from underneath the oil. And so I demonstrated that a oil bency, oil-density-based filtration mechanism without iron filings will effectively extract microplastics from water. And by simplifying this process and eliminating the need for iron filings, it becomes cheaper and also more practical, which makes it more likely to be applied large scale. Thank you.
I'm not sure if Michaela is here. Yes. No, I was questionable about whether Michaela and Will, and I won't make, Will's mom is here, but I won't make her talk about Will's project. And I'm not going to try to talk about it either, because it's-
Well, being able to be present will recognize William Shu and Michaela Kendall for their achievement. First is Cuddy Stedman, recognition of first-place finish at the 2002 Maine Science Fair, creating low-cost, non-invasive blood glucose monitoring automatic insulin injection system with artificial neural network and raspberry pi, PCK. And finish up with Alexander Busco for his first-place finish, Stockholm Junior Water Prize, microplastics using oil's density to extract these tiny toxins from water.
Thank you all. And last but not least, we have the Spring Track Girls State Champions.
The Bangor School Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize the Class A Girls Spring Track State Champions. Going to ask Coach Almoska to come up, please. And I want to just tell you, Coach, and the team, that you've shown continued improvement, which is the best that people can do. You keep getting better and better at what you do, as does your team. I mean, I would tell you that you've sustained excellence. It's very hard to win a state championship. A lot of people dream of winning one, and you've now won a couple just in one year. So congratulations to you and your team. I'd like to hear from you. And then we'll invite up your coaching staff, Principal Butler, Coach Vanetta Stein, and also the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Tager, and the Bangor School Committee for having us here tonight as we celebrate Bangor High School Girls Outdoor Track Team for winning the 2022 Class A state title. Once a year has become a tradition to have Bangor Day. All of our faculty and staff and students will wear something to display their Bangor pride. This last Saturday, it was Bangor Day 2.0, as we not only won a state championship in Bangor, but we also got to show the entire state how fortunate we are to have the new Cameron Stadium. Seeing Cardinal and White all over the facility, and then witnessing a group of athletes celebrate a state championship at midfield is a memory we will never forget. And doing that home makes it even more special. But it was not just the new beautiful Cardinal track that was so special. It was all these talented athletes that made the day so memorable. We were seated to have a very close meet with a very talented Gorham team. We knew that it would take every member to do their best for us to come out on top. These athletes saw a challenge and stepped up to meet the challenge. I had us seeded 86 to 88 points. We finished up with 97. We upseeded by having the mindset that every point that I score will take the pressure off my teammate. We competed as a team. We competed for our school. We competed for our city. But most importantly, we competed for each other. Because of that team-first mindset and love and support for each other, we are back-to-back state champions. Day after day, the athletes worked as hard as they could to get better. Then they would stay late after practice to stretch foam roll and just enjoy each other's company. All this hard work and companionship have made us into one unbelievable group of athletes, and it's such an honor and a privilege to be a part of it. Thank you to all the athletes, and congratulations. We are all very, very proud of all of you. Before I get done tonight, I want to thank some other groups. First, to our parents for all the kind words and encouragement that you have given to everyone involved in the track program. Thank you for your unbelievable support. To our administration, Mr. Butler, Dr. Harris Medberg, for all the positive comments that you've made about the team and their efforts during the season. Thank you. To Mr. and Mrs. Tager for staying for the entire state meet. Ladies and gentlemen, a state meet and outdoor track is six hours. And they were there well afterwards, taking pictures. Thank you very much for your commitment. Thank you. Three more groups, real quick. One is to Joe Nelson, head of our field maintenance, for his tireless work to make everything at Cameron pop. We, as a program, appreciate all you have done, and we are so lucky and fortunate to have you and your staff. To Coach Vanetta Stein, our athletic director, sustate title for the school, 111, and 77 under his watch. Thank you for not only all your support and guidance this past year, but for being the driving force in making the new Cameron Stadium a reality. And real quickly, if I can just take the spotlight for a quick second, I want to thank my mom and my dad because they taught me such values as honesty and hard work. I use those characteristics on a daily basis, and I thank you for always supporting me and our athletes and coaches. I love you both. Thank you. First is our very talented and wonderful senior group, Maya Elkhadi. Kosi Afiji. Megan Randall. Devon St. Louis. Julia Smallwood. Not here tonight, but recognizing Analena Whitman. For our very talented junior class, Julia Bassi. Anna Connors. Samantha Ear. Not here tonight, but recognizing Bridget Frazier. Sadie Harrow. Not here tonight, but recognizing Evelyn Humbert. Sarah King. Abigail McDonald. Not here tonight, but recognizing Emma McNeil. Nora Morasco. Nora Morasco. Not here tonight, but recognizing Annika Nowak. Not here tonight, but recognizing Abigail Quinn. Lilian Rice. She was here. Not here, we're recognizing Lorraine Tai. Sophomore Lily Carlson. Maddie Seer. Catherine McCarthy. Sophia Mazzarelli. Not here, but recognizing Annie Roberts. And not here, but recognizing Olivia Schwartz. Here and celebrating her 16th birthday, Allison St. Pierre. Not here, celebrating Chase Smith. Emma Cypress. Callie Tennant. Hannah Williams. Jenna Elkhadi. Caitlin Kelletter. Olivia Mitchell. Not here, but recognizing Sierra Phillips. Not here, but recognizing Sophie Ruder. Madeline Tai. And now to our coaching staff, Gary Johnson. Not here, but recognizing Justin Gagnon. Not here tonight, but recognizing Hannah Dunn. Everybody else is here. Allison Sanderson. John Oreo. Peter Son. Lindsey Aket. And last but not least, Roger Huber.
So if we could do what we did before and the tall people stand in the back. And I'm just gonna have you guys slide over. Okay, so everyone say go Rams. Can't do it again. If your parents want to join, absolutely. Thank you so much, everyone. Jerry, you didn't want to be in?
It's all good, friends. Good moment.
Okay, thank you. So let's resume, please. Any adjustments to the agenda, Superintendent Tager?
No adjustments.
Excellent. And public comments. So just as a reminder, members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence. And do we have any public comments tonight? Please come forward and state your name and place of residence, please.
My name is Landon. It is. My name is Landon Micho. I live at 77 Stillwater Avenue. I just wanted to come up again today and ask again for the school committee to promptly vote or whatever you guys do, talk about the gender support plan that I had pushed forward. And I have another person, another trans student here to talk about why it should be pushed through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Ben Newby and I live at 261 Ohio Street. I am a gender queer student who is a ninth grader at Bangor High School. And I recently moved up here from Arkansas, which was, if you can, as you can imagine, not a highly queer friendly location. And I really wished that my school had had this gender support plan. I was outed and then ridiculed. And then the school guidance contacted my family without even considering that I might not be out to them. Fortunately, I was at the time. But I would hate to, if anyone else ever had to go through that again. And I know that Bangor is a lot more of an accepting school than Arkansas was, but I still just strongly encourage this plan. It adds another layer of safety anonymity and it gives a student the chance to live their preferred identity at school without having to worry about their home life. Thank you.
Could you repeat your name one more time?
Ben Newby.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Michael Norton. I'm at 83 Allen Street, Unit C, Bangor, Maine. And I'm trying to direct a movie called Magnetosphere by Year's End for the widescreen theaters. It's an educational two-hour documentary. I have the sound draft narration finished, but I'm still somehow invisible to all the production services people all around the world industry. It's amazing to me. And I'm at home today and I get from Portland, Maine Police Department, an officer comes up to my door from Bangor P D, knocks and gives me a seize harassment notice, which is what this is, from Portland, Maine. I've never been to Portland. I've never been to the Portland Police Department. And I come tonight to ask and let you know that I'm a primarily horror and comedy writer. I'm asking for the school committee's help to write a letter to the community together that we all can sign to to say something about a group of people in Maine and beyond who have access daily to media tools, technology tools, guns unfortunately, and legal apparatuses and media mentions that people like me do not have access to. And they're committing grand larceny against me, a U S established business and a Maine established business. And if we can write a letter to say, police departments and law enforcement officials should be required a more rigid and disciplined higher learning tier before they get their badges, we all might live in a safer world today. We won't be selective service people and those law enforcement people playing world and police fire games with one another while we all have to put up with them both. So I hope that's a first draft. I didn't write that down, but if we can just encourage greater specialized higher learning for the law enforcement sector, so things like larceny, grand larceny, harassment and what the public speaker just said before me don't happen. Thanks.
Okay, next we have superintendent's proposals and updates. We don't have any action items, but we have several informational items. First, we have feedback on the mental health advisory group. Superintendent Tager.
Yes, Principal Silk, pupil services director Kristy Babin and school committee member Claire Mundell will provide feedback from the mental health advisory group. And I believe first we're going to hear from Principal Lynn Silk.
Thank you. This is an exciting night. I think for some of us, we waited for this night for a few years. Thank you, Claire, for continuing. The Citizens Advisory, it's quite a mouthful, so I'm going to read it. The Citizens Advisory Committee, and I'm hoping as I'm doing this skillfully stalling you that somebody's going to magically make it come up on the screen. But the Citizens Advisory Committee on Mental Health is an offshoot of our wellness policy, the Bangor School Department Wellness Policy. And in response to a charge from you, the school committee, to research this important issue. And we as a committee are very proud to be part of a school department that provides supports, you know, social, emotional supports and mental health supports so that all students can access programming to support our mission of excellence. And I'm very excited to be able to have as our lead presenter Morgan Pazinski, who is a senior at Bangor High School. And Morgan has made mental health wellness a cornerstone of her studies at Bangor High School.
Yes, please.
You should be able to just click it, move it.
Thank you. Hello, as Principal Silk said, I'm Morgan Pazinski. I'm a senior at Bangor High School and mental health has been a very important part of my mission within work with the school. I am a Humanities Capstone student as well. And that's what my research ended up being. But I was approached by my advisor joining this committee at the recommendation of Claire Mundell to bring in a student's perspective with mental health in the Bangor School Department. And so the slide you see here, make it count, mental health is not extracurricular. That kind of summarizes the heart of our mission in making a better general understanding of how the, the school department is attempting to act on mental health and understanding that mental health care is healthcare. And we have a duty as a school department to continue with our mission to address the needs of students. I guess, right? Text first. There we go. All right. So in our research review, we found that students who receive social, emotional, mental behavioral health supports achieve higher academically. And students with recent depressive symptoms are more than twice as likely to drop out as those without depressive symptoms, which really informs the need for our research here. So. And so as a committee, we have met once a month, starting in February. It's been a whirlwind of a ride that we all have put an enormous amount of effort in and our subgroups inventory assessment and better practices. We've all been meeting outside of our designated committee time. And so we have a variety of community members having membership within the subcommittee. We've had faculty who work at different Bangor schools. We've had school social workers. We've had school counselors, teachers, psychologists. We've had community members from different mental health practices, both private Acadia Mental Hospital, Knopscott Community Healthcare and the National Alliance of Mental Illness. And if I'm forgetting any, oh, as well as parents, we had quite We had quite the variety. If I forgot anyone, I truly apologize. We just had such a wonderful turnout. And so we would like to first introduce our inventory working group to understand best where we're at right now.
Good evening. I'm Ken Radiola. I'm a clinical social worker at the Bangor Regional Program. I was one of the members of the inventory work group. Our goal for the inventory subcommittee was to identify available mental health resources for students, families, and caregivers. One of the things that we learned through this process, actually from Morgan, was that we don't do a good enough job communicating the resources that we have to students, to staff, and to families. And you'll see that come up again with our, our next step from this subcommittee. As we looked at inventorying mental health resources in the schools, we felt it was also important to identify community-based mental health resources. There's a continuum of care. We have students for part of a school days. The rest of those days, they're in the community with families. So we thought it was very important to highlight those resources as well. I'll start with Bangor School Department resources. As you see on the slides, we have twelve school counselors spread across our schools, ten and a half school social work positions, thirteen speech and language pathologists, and another four contracted providers of speech and language services, six employed occupational therapists, and two contracted occupational therapists, and four contracted psychologists to support our students' mental health needs. In addition, this year at the high school, there was a collaboration with PCHC that opened a clinic there that bridges some of that school-to-community needs in the continuum. Community-based assets, Bangor is a large metropolitan area. It's a service center for entire county and beyond. We have individual therapy, resources, crisis services. We have case management and in-home services. We have the area's only psychiatric hospital. We have medication management. We have a crisis stabilization unit in Bangor. We have community support groups. There are countless resources in our community. I also want to highlight that we have twenty-eight trained suicide prevention gatekeepers in our schools. We also have seven staff members, staff members that are trained to present the suicide awareness and prevention training for school staff that are required. And we recently had twenty-five of our ed techs go through and complete the mental health first aid course in March. Some of the resources we used in our, our subcommittee, we looked at the Department of Health and Human Services developed a comprehensive children's service grid to help families and service providers select the best matched service for the child's needs. Accompanying that were service fact sheets that provided an explanation of the services, how to access the services, information on how the service would assist and support students, and then eligibility requirements for those services. And a caregiver resource grid too, because sometimes treating the mental, mental health needs of our, our students is, is not really enough. Sometimes the families and caregivers need support also. So we have included that resource into your information. And then some of the national guidance that we, we researched and followed. The National Association of Social Workers Standard of School Social Work Practice, the School Social Work Association of America Practice Model, and then the American School Counselor Association model. So looking at some of the, the services that social workers provide. We provide a lot of related services. We mobilize services for families, school, and the community. We participate in special education assessments and meetings for students receiving special education services. Some of the direct services to students, we provide individual counseling. We provide suicide, suicide gatekeeper prevention, intervention, and assessment as well as linking students and families to community-based services if they're needed. We teach social skills in our classrooms using the social thinking model, behave, social behavior mapping, five against the law and zones of regulation. We also support with behavior intervention, case management, and supportive students with the challenge or, or need of the moment. Services to parents, families, and guardians. We support basic needs, food, clothing, and heat during the winter. We conduct home visits to families. We conduct parent training and psychoeducation. We collaborate with community-based teams. And we provide McKinney-Vento Act support for our students experiencing homelessness. Services to school personnel. We consult for student individual education program and 504 teams. We develop staff in-service trainings and programs. We participate in functional behavior assessment development, identifying the, the cause of unexpected behaviors or challenging behaviors. And we consult with teachers and administrators to meet student needs. Then school and community liaison, we work collaboratively, collaboratively, excuse me, collaboratively with community providers on a regular basis, usually or often through wraparound meetings with community-based providers. We obtain and coordinate community resources to meet student needs. And service to districts, we monitor student progress and attendance, address truancy, and we participate in dropout prevention. We participate in district committees, such as this committee and the Suicide Prevention Committee. We also act as mandated reporters of suspected child abuse and neglect. And we support student transitions from school to school, or sometimes from inpatient hospitalization back into the community and schools. At this time, I would call Dana Morris, school counselor, to share a little bit about the school counselors roles in our schools.
Hi, I'm Dana Morris. I'm the school counselor at Fourteenth Street School, Fairmount School, and Vine Street School. You will see a school counselor in the classroom doing small group work or working with students individually and serving all students in the school environment. We deliver the social, emotional learning curriculum and use many other resources to teach children the skills that they need to be more successful in the classroom and in life. We work as a team with teachers, administrators, and all staff to develop the best plan for students. Parents and the community are a part of this partnership. Good homeschool communication and knowing our families is an important role in this process. We work to monitor student progress, doing behavioral interventions, and helping students be at their best for learning from the minute we step into the school buildings each day until we leave at night. School counselors at the middle school level do all that has been mentioned above. In addition to this, academic programming and placement of students and scheduling are important roles in order for each student to meet their potential and to make sure students are set up for future success. Registration and orientation is an important part of this process because this is where we meet our families and find out where the needs are. Personal and crisis counseling takes place daily to help students with a multitude of issues. Each mental health professional is gatekeeper-trained to assess the risk of suicide. Some of the topics of the middle school curriculum, just a little sample, how to grow your brain, planning ahead, recognizing bullying and harassment, thoughts, emotions, and decision-making, manage, managing your emotions, resolving challenging conflicts, practicing positive self-talk, understanding stress and anxiety strategies, and making a plan and guide to healthy relationships. School counselors at the high school monitor individual student progress, help students evaluate their interests, skills, and abilities, and help students develop an educational plan. Counselors work as a team with parents, teachers, and students to develop strategies to assist students to be the best they can be. Counselors do personal and crisis counseling and make referrals to agencies and to provide further support if needed. The curriculum is designed to address academic, career, and personal social needs of students. This is provided in the classroom, small groups, and in teams with the Castle Framework, which is collaborative for academic, social, emotional learning, which was adopted by the Maine Department of Education as standards for social, emotional learning. Some of the topics addressed are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, responsible, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. School counselors must update their knowledge and skills by participating in training, professional meetings, and relevant coursework. And program promotion is important in order to share services provided by the counseling program. Research is used in the development of the program and used to continue to update program activities. The team approach is what is most important to serve students and families. And we work closely with teachers and all staff members in all schools, as you will see in the diagram in the next few slides. Thank you.
We also have school psychologists that we contract with who provide psychological evaluations, consultation, professional development, safety plans, behavior plans, functional behavior assessments, attend, they attend IEP meetings and 504 meetings, collaborate with school-based teams, and implement the positive behavior interventions and supports. And what Dana was talking about in regards to the teamwork within our mental health field and providers in school is somewhat illustrated in this diagram that we borrowed from the Sun Prairie Area School District in Wisconsin and the School Social Work Association of America. As you can see, each of the school psychologists, school social workers, and school counselors have their own unique roles, but there's also a great deal of overlap when we support students and teamwork between mental health providers within the schools. And if we were to duplicate this for the Bangor School Department, there would be a lot more overlap than in this diagram that demonstrating the, the teamwork and collaboration that we experience. As our inventory subcommittee met, we determined or identified two next steps or, or needed activities. One was, I mentioned earlier, we need to develop a communication plan to get the inventoried mental health resources into the community, to our students, to our faculty. So that if we have a student who has a need, everybody in our schools knows how to access that service. The second is that we need to conduct a needs assessment to identify gaps and emerging needs in the area of student mental health resources. The, the fact that some of our students don't know how to access what we have makes it really hard to identify what we really need. So we need to develop that communication plan, share the information, and then conduct a needs assessment to see what, what else we need or where else we can improve.
So I was part of the assessment working group. And so what we're looking for here, it will is to understand the patterns and trends in student mental health as a community and identify individual students who are displaying symptoms of being at risk. So one of the main surveys we looked at was MY survey administered by the Maine Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services. It's an anonymous survey covering different health behaviors and attitudes within youth. And it was tailored to the developmental level of a student. So a third grader is not getting the same survey as a senior in high school. Eighty percent of Maine schools participate, and it's no cost to the Bangor School Department. And the data is available to administrators, but it is, the district level data is not available to the public. So we remain that anonymity. And with different school departments that we consulted with who are already implementing this program, they all had very positive reactions to the survey. And at our first meeting, we discussed the survey with the lead at the MYS workshop, Corey Pow, who went through the survey and discussed all of our concerns and questions regarding the survey. And so we wanted to address some concerns about a new survey. So there's no evidence that this type of survey would harm any students. And it has been vetted and approved by the University of Southern Maine IRB. And only county-level data is public. So we would just be one of many schools in the Penobscot County participating in this survey. And we would only see Penobscot County Penobscot County level data available. And like stated before, eighty percent of schools in Maine participate in this survey. And so when we looked at patterns and trends, we also discussed the possibility of doing focus groups to look at qualitative data for underrepresented groups. As we see with broad community data, the underrepresented, underrepresented groups often times don't get completely heard because of the small amount of students who are in these groups. So we wanted to look at focus groups to understand their perspective and their needs better and to make sure that we aren't looking at a one-size-fits-all approach. As for the identification of specific students at risk, we currently use the Student Risks Screening Survey implemented shortly before COVID-19 cast our school department into a bit of a whirl. And so it's a seven-item teacher report measure. And one of the issues, though, is it limits the ability to identify internalized issues such as anxiety and depression that students would be more likely to be able to identify within themselves rather than have their adult identify them. And so the research shows that these internalized disorders are often missed by teachers and parents. And so we considered the use of a broader self-report measure as seen from the Sifler Endeavor two thousand and fifteen medical, or mental health screening at school textbook. We pulled three possible ways to look at mental health with the self-report measure. As you can see here, pediatric symptom checklist, a behavioral and emotional screening system, as well as a strengths and difficulties questionnaire. And so our recommendations as an assessment group is we want to consider the participation of the MYS survey. And we want to conduct the focus groups with a University of Maine partnership and consider a use of a self-report screener either in place of or in addition to the SRSS. But we do need a protocol for identifying these students and notifying the parents and helping them take the next steps to get proper treatment so that they have the best chance of academic success. And in addition to that communication with parents, we also need to work with parents to create trust and buy-in regarding discussing mental health and doing these surveys within the school department. And so Best Practices Working Group is next.
Pardon my phone. This is where my notes are. There we go. Trying to save paper, one tree at a time. All right. So thank you for your time. My name is Imka Schessler-Jandro. I'm the parent of a Vine Street student, a yoga instructor, and a faculty member up at the University of Maine. So I wear many hats. But when I was asked to join this group and especially become part of the Best Practice Working Group, it struck me that it's something super important that we need to be focusing on. As Lynn mentioned at the start of our presentation, we're first and foremost a school department, right? So we need to be making sure that the students have the access to the education that they need and deserve. And our title too, quite frankly, as children growing up in our community. And part of that is making sure that their mental, emotional well-being is taken into consideration at every step. So if you want to progress my slide, Lynn, thank you. Or, or it won't progress. That's all right. Are we stuck? Oh, I got it with the left click. I think I'm on it. All right. So the goals of the Best Practice Group was really to can we go backwards one? It progressed itself twice. And now it's sticky. My apologies for a little bit of technical trouble. Lynn, can you back there and see if it will? Yeah, it appears to be frozen. I know, right? All right. All right. Yeah, maybe if you advance it. There we go. We want to go back to. There we go. All right. My apologies for a little technical look there, right? Things happen. So one of the key goals of, or some of the key goals of our Best Practices Group was to find practical measures that we could implement that wouldn't be too much of a heavy lift with a focus on making this a normal part of the school discussion, that we make it caring, an integral part of the student's experience, and that we are taking a proactive approach rather than a reactive approach to things that are appearing, right? Because as we have Because as we have heard, right, there are things that can be a little bit more apparent to teachers and/or to staff in general, and it's easy to take a, let's put a Band-Aid on this. Let's help you now that we've, it's become apparent. But if we can, as from a young age, support students from their mental health perspective, maybe we can prevent or avoid that Band-Aid situation, right? We're doing a great job with that, but there's always room for improvement. So why is this super important? It is, right? Because according to studies, one in five youth have diagnosable emotional behavior or mental health disorders. One in five is not a small number. All right. And amongst all the other issues that are coming up in prevalence from childhood obesity rates and all other things, we need to be thinking about how we care about our students holistically and at all times. So unfortunately, the majority do not receive the needed care, for whatever reason that may be. And school might be the one place where we can help them out. And we again want to make that as part of the overall focus here. So schools are where a majority of students or majority of youth access care. So under identification and lack of services is particularly problematic. Again, not those things that are super apparent and obvious, but those underlying issues that may be that anxiety that is harder to pinpoint from outward behavior. And progress for me. And we have a lot of information on these slides, and you can certainly read them on your own, so I won't read them too verbatim. I'm just highlighting some of the key points on here. So when we think about what happens to a student who goes without the mental health supports that they need, the consequences can be rather dire. Seventy percent of children who receive mental health services access those services at school. Seventy percent of students are receiving that at school, right? We know that we have some greater problems with access to healthcare within the general populace, not just here in Bangor, Maine. So we need to make sure that we're doing our part as best we can in the school, and also to let students know where they can receive assistance outside of the school as well, and where we can support that access. So school-based health centers, the integrate mental health can help eliminate many of these barriers. And in my role as a mentor, I've passed the new kind of space that we have in Bangor High School for counseling. And I understand that that's a robust program that is growing. And I know that we already have some really wonderful counselors on staff, but we can always do a little bit more, right? Okay. So what does research say? Research says we embed it. It's not an afterthought. It's a key component of everyday life of moving around within a school department or a school community. The focus is on competencies, making sure that the folks that are engaged in intervening have the resources, the knowledge, the training that is required to make it a safe intervention, to make it a responsible intervention, invention, and to also know when to say, I need someone else to help me with this, right? So we want to make sure that staff are well-supported and not feeling like this is another massive job that we're putting on their plate. They're already busy enough educating our children, right? So it's implemented in environments with teachers and students, right? This is not just a one-size-fits-all. It's not a trickle-down kind of system. We want to make sure that the students are engaged. And we want to promote social emotional aspects of development all along the way. So when we think about what is prioritized, effective instruction, classroom management, teacher goals to enhance support and learning that align with current goals, not a whole new set of curriculum. No one is suggesting that we take time out of the day, right, which is short, and say, oh, and here now is your mental health support class, right, or networking or whatever that might be. It really needs to be integrated across the board and as seamless as possible. And when we say normalizing mental health and the considerations of mental health, that's what we're talking about, right? No student should feel that when they go to school that they are strange or abnormal or odd for trying to get the support that they need. And if it's just woven through, right, our environment and the way we are engaging with them on a regular basis, then we can take some of that stigma out of the picture. So we're looking at strategies that align peer influences with academic and behavioral goals. I know that for me personally, one of the things that I found really motivating when we had students participate on this subcommittee or this advisory committee was that they have a greater sense of agency and that they feel that they're involved in the process, and that's part of the entire picture. All right. So we have a few different groups, and we'll be shifting presenters to give you more details on all of these. But we were looking at the benefits of positive behavioral interventions and supports. That's our PBIS. Mental health literacy broken down into three different components, mental health first aid, which we have been mentioned just previously, common language, what does what, or who does what rather in mental health, so defining those roles. Looking at our response to intervention, our RTI, collaborative behavioral support teams, that's our CBST. We adjusted that acronym over time, staffing ratios, and then peer mediation or peer mentoring programs. All right. So this is where I'm going to hand it off. I'm not the PBIS expert, so. There is Angela over here.
Hello. Good evening. Thanks for having us this evening. My name is Angela Felicia. I'm a clinical social worker with Northern Light at KDS. I'm happy to be presenting material this evening on positive behavior supports and intervention. So some of you may have heard of positive behavior interventions and support. You can see from the graph, the information in your handouts, this is actually a three-tiered process and support that is incorporated into the entire school system. So these are activities that are embedded into the structure of the day so that all kiddos know what is expected of them from playground to cafeteria to the classroom in and of itself. And then moving up the pyramid, those interventions get a bit more individualized based on a child's particular needs. But it is a system for the entire school to understand what is expected across the board for kiddos. The thing that I think is particularly important and valuable about the positive behavior interventions and support is that it's an iterative process, so it builds on itself and learns from interventions and systems that are happening in the building, right? So for example, if on day one, the school decides to create some expectations about no running in the hallways, and we might want to make some sort of change that we might want to run in the hallways during gym class if there's a big snowstorm, right, so that kids can still get some energy. So it's a silly, simple example to just illustrate that the idea would be that we don't have hard and fast expectations, but we make changes and the school community is what makes those changes. Oh, and RTI is next. Super.
So RTI is not, or response to intervention is not a new concept. We've been doing in Bangor for, since I've been here, the 12 years I've been here. And we started with our amazing literacy coaches who brought it in as a way to help our children who were struggling with literacy. We expanded it to math. And through their, their work, we got, I think, pretty good at, at the RTI model. So this really is not new for us to do response to intervention. Every school's doing it. It's the law. But we, we really feel like we could up our game on the behavioral and the mental health piece. And so when we're thinking about this response to intervention, just for, as a review, if people are not familiar with it, the response is that you teach, you would teach behavioral expectations, and then you would reward students for meeting those expectations in a positive manner. It goes hand in hand with the PBIS. And so on the bottom tier, you see the green tier, those are, I can't even see this, so I should put the glasses on. School-wide, sort of like this, school-wide routines are developed by your, your students and your staff together. Everybody knows what they are. Again, part of that PBIS model. And then they're explicitly taught to students, and they're consistently enforced across, everybody's working together towards these. And for the bulk of students, eighty to ninety percent of students, tier one is great. That's all you need. The next level going up would be your core intervention plus targeted interventions. And in these, it might be the classroom teacher, it might be the school counselor, it might be a social worker, but it'd be small group work where you'd be giving more explicit, maybe teaching it in a different way, maybe doing role part, role-playing or puppets, but a way that might make it easier for some students to understand in that small group. And you would track that data to make sure that they were meeting the targets you had set for them. And again, this usually works for another five to 10% of the population. And then for some students, they need a much more intensive intervention, and this is for only one to three percent of your population. This is very explicit instruction, often one-to-one instruction, and usually provided by a school counselor or a social worker. If you advance me, please. So similar, but not different, this collaborative behavior team has changed names three times, and you can see it does not match its acronym because we used to call it, but call it collaborative behavior team, but CBT means something else to everybody else in the group but me. And so I had to, we had to change it, so I need to fix that. But a collaborative behavior support team is similar to an RTI team, similar to a PBIS team, and there would be a lot of overlap. And so you, each school would kind of have to figure out how to do this, so you're not meeting on top of meeting on top of meeting. But one of the, we used to just call it Dr. Rogers time at Fine Street. And so Sue's smiling. I think she's been around for Dr. Rogers time or Dr. Con time or wherever you were. And that's the time the school psychologist would come in and meet with a core group. And so that time is protected. It's an hour a week. There is a team that meets every week. And it's a core team comprised of the school psychologist, the building principal, the school counselor, the social worker, and special education staff. And then we bring into that group other personnel as we needed, including classroom teachers or specialists, ed techs, students, parents, whoever needs to come in to support students. And teachers bring in data, and we look at that data, we talk about what's going on, and then we make a plan. It's a data-driven plan, but we have these experts to kind of guide us. And what's great about it is it develops capacity within our staff. You do this often enough. Dr. Rogers and I were sitting at a meeting the other day, and a teacher had come in, and she was like, I, I don't know. I don't know what to do. I don't know. And he said, tell me what's going on. And she was, I think I'm going to do, I'm going to do this. I'm going to use this data tool. I'm going to collect it here. I'm going to do that. And then when we were just sitting there, she ran it all out. She wrote the plan, and she goes, that was so awful. And so we were just like, our work here is done. So because that really is the goal, that everybody in the school is going off and doing this. We're not waiting for once a week for doctor who, whoever, in our case, Dr. Rogers, is coming in and telling us what to do. John Hattie tells us that when a teacher feels like they can be effective and they have the tools, that's one of the top indicators that our children can be successful. So that's what the collaborative behavior team model is. The other thing I would say about it is that we just believe that behind every challenging behavior is an unsolved problem and a lagging skill. And traditional discipline is not going to necessarily address that on its own. You've got to teach the children the lagging skills, so they stop doing it. And then they learn a compensation strategy, or they learn something else. The other part of this team is that we were able quickly to see we had trends in our school. And, and to be able as a team to look at those and say, what professional development do we need to give to our staff so that we can move on? It is, there are some recommendations to review what's currently in place because I think every school has something similar. And so not everybody's going to have to reinvent the wheel and do it the way that Fine Street did, or the way that 14th Street did, or whatever school. Everybody can review their model. Align it with the PBIS and the RTI. Otherwise, you're going to have meeting after meeting after meeting. And one of the things that I gave you a packet of some of the things we think are really important. One is this commitment to the model. We do ours on Friday morning at eight. Nothing else happens in our school Friday morning at eight. Unless, I think we cancel once this year. And it was a major event with somebody being, a lot of people were all sick. So committing to the model is important, but I'm going to stick to my time. I would talk to you about this for hours if you let me. It's something I love. My school counselor is here. She started with me, and we've been doing it for at least 10 years in our building, and so we're really excited about it. But I'm going to turn it back over to.
All right. So one of the things that's near and dear to my heart is student engagement when it comes to all things school-related, right? I think it's super important that we have students on student councils and advisory boards and all these things. So as a student, I'm going to speak to this peer mediation component, not as an expert on peer mediation, but as somebody who went through peer mediation training in middle school myself. And part of this idea of getting students involved through peer mediation or peer mentoring, whatever name you adopt, it is to help students be part of that proactive plan. When I was a peer mediator, we helped to identify hints that bullying was about to occur. We were able to learn how to step in when we thought there was going to be a fistfight in the hallway, right? In a way that was safe and protected, because through every stage, we had a teacher who was our mentor that would come and support us. But we, as the students, were able to say, stop, right? We see what's happening. How can we help you? And then we were encouraged to be the conversation guiders, if you will. I remember some times where two friends got into it, we pulled them aside, we had our faculty mentor with us, but I, as a student, was able to say, how did this start? I think this might be a disagreement. I think you're actually saying the same things. And as a young person, right, in that middle-aged group, middle, middle-school age group, to be able to have those skills is really empowering. And it can start even younger, right? Just allowing a student or giving the student the skills to say, oh, I think that's bullying, right? Even at the younger ages, or, ooh, that didn't sound like a kind way to say that, and to help other students respond and communicate in ways that are kind. Studies have shown, and I think the citations are somewhere in your packets fully, that students who are peer mediators are more empathetic, that they're more understanding to their community members, students and teachers and parents alike. It can help with at-home communication skills as well as in-the-school communication skills. And then students who are peer mediators are, also tend to have increased academic success, which is always going to be our primary focus, right? If this is one thing that we can help or do to add to that, it enhances social and emotional competencies, and it reduces disciplinary action. So when we are thinking about not always having to react, if we can help the students learn how to be proactive and to prevent some things that could lead to behavioral issues down the line, we can move to that state of empowerment and engagement, and therefore build into our normalized status of addressing mental health throughout the days. So some key recommendations, I'm an action item kind of person, and it's nice to move from talking about something to be able to do something. So some concrete things that we would recommend starting with is to identify program leaders. So as it says here, ideally, this would include teachers, staff members, and parents, right? Because we don't want parents in the dark about what we would be teaching their children, what to do, how to do, or what they're recognizing, and to have common language, which we had addressed early in our presentation. We also would need to review existing peer mediation trainings. I will let you know that the University of Maine already has published, it's available through Fogler Library, a 62-page peer mediation training guide for, I want to say it's grade four through eight. So it's pretty broad. So a leadership group could take a look at such a document, see what still fits. It is a little older at this point, but use that as a tool for building. We don't need to be recreating the wheel. Folks are busy enough as it is, so we want to honor that. And then we would kind of tweak it, refine it, cream up with our own curriculum, and then hopefully come back and see this committee with our proposal with a, you know, a goal to implement a peer mediation training. And this again wouldn't be an add-on during the school day. This could be an after-school club. That's how it was for me as a student in middle school. It became an after-school club that we were nominated to participate in to start. I don't know where it went from there, right? You're only in middle school for three years, so I hope the program still exists, but one never knows. But then we would, we would go about figuring out how to implement that in a way that's non-disruptive. Lynn, do you want to speak to the table? This is, or who? This table part, so this is, when we look at the staffing ratios for mental health, there's the recommended ratio, school counselors, one to 250 for the American School Counselor Association. This is a lot of information on, on two slides. Social workers for School Social Worker Association, America is one to 250. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Because this part I can't speak to, Lynn.
So when we did our research, we, we just kind of wondered what the school, what the recommendations were. Each professional organization has their own recommendation, which, you know, when you, I think that's interesting because the Maine DOE has their, what they're going to fund too, under their essential services and what they think. And Bangor falls in the middle on most of these, I think we'll see in the next slide. But school counselors, the American School Counselor Association, one to 250 is the recommendation, one to 350 from MDOE. Social worker, one to 250, school psychologist, one to 500, 700, that is not in the MDOE piece. And the school nurse, as you can see there, one to 750 or one to 800, depending on which one you're looking at. Progress me. In Bangor, right now, we have recommended 14 school counselors. We have 12. That would be under the American School Counselor Association recommendation. And under the Maine Department of Education, they would recommend 10, and we have 12. And under the main department of education, they would recommend 10 and we have 12. So we're kind of falling right depend, in the middle there. For the school social worker, from the School Social Worker Association of America, they recommend 14. We have 10.5. We have already increased that and we've been steadily increasing that, as you know. But we have 11 and a half scheduled up, projected for the next school year. Under school psychologist, they recommend five to seven and we have four. A school nurse, 4.5 and we have six. That would be the American School Nurses Association. But the main department of education recommends 4.3 and we have six. So again, I, we are doing really well on nursing. So next steps, was there something special to do this or do we just kind of got tired at the end, I think? Okay. So next steps. Obviously we're thrilled to have been here to present this to you. You have work to do and we will wait and then see what you have for us. But we would recommend thinking about how to make mental health embedded in our school culture. And it's been said over and over and over tonight. It's not like now we're doing mental health stuff. This is the social emotional learning part of your day and now we're going to do this. It's embedded throughout with overarching goals and a, a plan. It's strategic, right? So more intervention. And there were people in our group that really wanted to look at discipline practices. We need, we would need much more representation in a different group of two, to address that. Elementary school discipline practices are not the person who should be addressing that at a district level. So we would need, we would need to consider a lot more voices. Parent engagement, student engagement, peer mentoring and more connections to the community services that we have are some of the recommendations that we have. And now, thank you for this. We were so excited. And if you have any questions, Sue had 12. I'm sorry, member Sorg.
Member Sorg.
Director Baden. Do you have any questions or we?
Any, any questions?
Can I make a quick clarification? Just the psychologists are, those are not four full-time psychologists. We have four psychologists contracted, right? And, and it's hard to know exactly how.
Yeah. For us at this point in time, but they, there's four contracted school psychologists for us. One, we access intermittently for high-level assessments that we need. So that one's pretty minimal. Dr. Rogers does the majority of our consultations within our school and meeting with teachers. Dr. Kylie Cole does all of our evaluations at this point in time. She has evaluators that come into the building. So she's completing all of those assessments. And then Dr. Khan, but he resigned in the middle of the year. I have been able to pull him in for specific needs when I've needed that too. So I will tell you, we applied for a grant so that I can advertise and hire a full-time school psychologist for the district. The additional contracted people come out of a separate, it's a grant that we get from the department of education. So it's not embedded in our budget, which is really helpful to us. So I'll continue with the contracted path, but we applied for a grant. If we get that grant, we'll be able to advertise nationally for a school psychologist concept.
Member Sectors and then member Sorg.
That, that was just fabulous. I, I, I kept, the, the amount of work you all have done, the work you're doing, that was just unbelievably incredible. Like, thank you, thank you, thank you. That was incredible. So I have, I have a bunch of different questions. First off, I want to say that I was privileged to attend Morgan's presentation last week, her humanities presentation. And I believe that she, and I believe that she is there, she is, that she is potentially going to be coming to the school committee and presenting. That's what she had said. And so I think the committee will really be fascinated because her project looked at actually talking to students. And so I think, I mean, this is just really exciting that you were on that. One of the things that I noticed from her presentation was that the students in the school didn't know how to access a lot of the resources, which I know, I think one of you had said in your presentation. And I, I'm really curious and I know I'm going to be asking something about this later, so it kind of fits in now. PCHC, I know that you had talked about that. And I'm wondering, do any of the numbers that you talked about, are they included with the PCHC? How, I, I know that you also talked about better advertising to students about that. But I also be curious about like, how does that, I mean, it's free to us. Are, are students really accessing it? Are, are there gaps in their schedule? Like, like where is that?
I would think someone who, I think.
We can, we can address that. I was aware of your question. So if you want to address that, Paul, that'd be great. Principal Butler.
The clinic is not embedded in any of our, those are just school or contracted that we've contracted with. That's a separate.
So we're potentially even way better.
Yes.
We can give you an update on the clinic.
Yeah, I met recently with, with the mental health provider, clinical provider at the high school in the PCHC School Based Health Clinic. There was a time where they were struggling to, the logistics of scheduling appointments. There was the launch in February. Parent awareness, student awareness. There was a point in time where they were struggling to get appointments scheduled. They were struggling at a point where they would get appointments scheduled and students would follow up. We went through a series of, I guess, discussions and identification of pathways for those things to improve. And most recently, I was told that they've filled over 80% of their available weekly slots.
Wow.
So they're over 41, I think was the number out of 50. And we also agreed that there was need, an opportunity for them to be open for two days a week in the summer. And we've worked out a plan, you know, I guess it's so proximal to the front of the building. And the building staffed in some fashion over the course of the summer that we aren't, we aren't closed or aren't, we're not access, inaccessible at times when, at any time when they might be available. So it's near max, I would say. And, and all the work that's been done and back and forth has resulted in a good, good filling out of the slots available at high school.
That's, that's fantastic. And then may, may I continue to ask a few more questions? Okay. So my, my next one, you were talking about the peer meditation mediation program. And I can, I can say that, so my daughter is a peer mentor in the elementary school. And she had an incident come up that she did not know how to handle it. And, and I'm like, okay, you need to talk to the school counselor and you need to figure this out because it's not appropriate for a fourth grader to be kicking you on the playground. So I think that that will be very, very welcome and I would love to have that before next school year. So, and then you, some, one of this, you were talking about service to the homeless. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about, about the homeless population. I know that we have a homeless population in the school and like, what sort of extra services? What have you found? If, if there's other resources?
Simple bandit here, or would you like a social worker to address them? We can talk about the services that we provide. I don't have enough numbers or data for you, but I think that Anne probably could give us the best information on that. Yeah.
Cause I know it's a growing issue and it's like the hot topic in our community right now.
My name's Anne Small. I am a social worker at Vine Street and I support at Doughty and Fairmount. And one of the things that is part of our role is working under the McKinney-Vento Act, which provides, it kind of equals the, the playing field for our homeless students so that they can enroll in school without needing all the, we're not having all the necessary required documents right on the spot, but trying to keep them in school. And, and so we identify based on their living situation. And we have an enormous scary number of families living in hotels at this time. So we might have families with three children in one hotel room. And so I don't know the ins and outs of, of how they get vouchers. But Penquess helps with this and you try to get, help them get vouchers so that they can move into some better housing. And it takes time. Some of these families are in the hotels for months. And it's stressful and it's frustrating. And we, we do all we can to help. We have a food bag program, so we will deliver food bags. And that's not just for the homeless population, but for any family that asks. So we, we will get them in touch with other agencies and just do what we can to move the process along. And I don't have concrete numbers about this, but I can say that. Trying to think of the page that we have, we meet roughly once a month and go over. We keep close tabs on our homeless children. But I, I'm going to guess there's 50 to 60 homeless families that we are taking care of in the Bangor School Department. That's probably conservative. So we have, yeah, we have 12 at Vine Street. Yeah, that's right around 12. I don't know the specific numbers for the other schools, but it's, it's a problem. And housing is a significant issue. It's, it's, some of the hotels are not taking the vouchers anymore. It's, it costs them a lot, I think, to, to take care of these families. So the McKinney-Vento Act requires us to provide transportation for the students so that they can get to school. So they're identified for this, for the school year. And let's say they start in Bangor, but move to Brewer. They're still considered our McKinney-Vento student. And we provide transportation if they want their child to stay in Bangor schools.
Excuse me, we share that cost of transportation with the, with another.
With, yeah, yeah. So you know the, the specifics of it, but.
We have two social workers that really have their boots on the ground to support families that are suffering from homelessness. And that would be Renee Perron and Becky Tower. They are doing home visits on a regular basis. They may see those families or children two to three times a week, just to make sure that they're getting connected in the community with services that they need. Getting to medical appointments, getting the food that they need, everything like that. But those two social workers are out and about at those hotels and shelters on a regular basis.
And I was going to just add on something similar. A lot of these families don't, school's not their top priority right now. And I think Renee Perron, when she came and gave you a presentation recently, said her job is any barrier that's preventing a child from accessing education. So Anne and the other social workers do an amazing job of developing a rapport with students. What is keeping, you don't have the right clothes, I'll get you the right clothes. You know, you don't have a backpack, you're getting a backpack. Whatever, you need food, you're hungry, you need me to come get you. And I know that Anne and all the others will go get kids. They'll meet with them in the home. And one of the biggest barriers is getting parents to trust the school. And I think the social work is doing an amazing job with that.
That's a big part of it is, is getting those parents to, to trust us and develop that relationship. And just know that it's not a situation, I've had them say, I'm so, I, I, this doesn't happen. I can't believe we're in this position. And this isn't a situation of judgment. This is a situation of, we want to do everything we can to help. And once we get that connection, it can be very powerful. And the system is really struggling. So we're just looking out for all avenues that we can go towards to get them what they need.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Members, member Sorg was next.
Great. No, I don't really have 12 questions, but I want to tell you, it was a fantastic presentation. I thank you very much. A lot of useful information. I do have a question about what is it? Myhs, M-I-Y-H-S? I know it's an acronym. Do, what does, what do the letters mean?
Main Integrated Youth Health Survey. Do you want to take that one, Claire?
Okay, sure. Yeah, that's the acronym. Main Integrated Youth Health Survey. So it's, it's administered by.
I know, we are as educated, we are great with acronyms, but sometimes us old folks need to have it spelled out for us.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I gotta laugh at that. I'm sorry. The other question, I think your recommendations through this are wonderful. I ran it off at the house. I got a packet about yeetick of information and going through it. My question is, have you developed plans or strategies how to, for our school committee to approve this, to implement it in the schools?
RT, we've met for two months. And so our, we, we got some things on paper for you to just consider. I think the next step is for the school committee to take what we've given you. Think about it and then give us some direction at some.
And we will be having a workshop in August to consider recommendations.
Cause that's my feeling. I'd like to, how are we going to do this? Being a retired teacher, there's a lot on a teacher's plate. And how do we help the teachers feel that they can do this without being overstressed and going home and crying at night and, and all this?
So one of the things we do talk about in that collaborative behavior support team, one of the things, when Tim retired, we did a little list of things that he had taught us. And one of the things he taught us is if you're spending more time on the plan than you were on the behavior, rework the plan. And so, so teachers, it was, that was part of that professional development that you have to establish when you're changing mindsets and philosophies. Once you, once you buy into this and you start doing it, you'll see that you're going to spend way less time by simply giving him a star or her a star or whatever, or giving a check-in, check-out, two-minute check-in, check-out, way better than having behavior all day long. And so our data really supported that.
I know that works great pre-K through three. I know it does. But as you get older, there's got to be other, other ways to implement this with kids. I know when Dr. Mark Roth was in our system many years ago, he had a social emotional group meetings at lunchtime at Cohen Middle School. And they would be five, six, seven or eight boys usually in with him, having lunch, talking about social skills, how to work things through and how to get along.
I remember I was a middle school principal, so we did implement this all the way to eighth grade. And there, it's come a long way since then. I would say we were just starting with RTI and PBIS, but we definitely need to get input from middle school and high school because it would definitely look a lot different.
Thank you. One of the recommendations that was, that came out of the study was PBIS district-wide. And we did apply for a grant and we were awarded the grant. So we're going to be ready to roll that out in September.
Superintendent.
I just want to thank you for the presentation. It was, it was very well thought out. And just to kind of answer member Sorg's question. Chair Hassan is planning a workshop in August, so you all have time to digest everything you, you heard. Similar to, we did the retreat to talk about DEI and it gave me a chance to talk to our administrators as well. So I'll be discussing with our administrators to get, get their opinions and then as a school committee, we want to get your opinions in August. Then we can decide what we can bring forward from what we heard tonight.
And all, a lot of these questions, I know we'll have more time to go in-depth like we did with the DEI committee at the retreat. Members Frig and then Members Srag.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief. Most of my comments have been sad. I just want to reiterate what a wonderful presentation that was and how much professional expertise went into that, largely on a volunteer capacity, I think, that we're all the beneficiaries of. And the student perspective, it's really wonderful to have you involved with that as well. So just thank you for the time. As a parent of a younger child, children who will be coming up through, I'm very grateful for this work. I think the people of this community are hungry for this. And I would just ask, once we are ready to implement this, which I think that we are, will be soon, are now perhaps. We can't keep this under a bushel because you've talked a lot about changing the culture and the stigma around these conversations. First of all, the people of Bangor want this conversation. And changing the culture is, part of that is being vocal about it and leading from the front on it as an institution, as a school district. I would love to see town halls in, on the east side and the west side, maybe next fall, to go through this presentation, maybe with fewer acronyms, but go through the presentation to tell people what we're thinking about, what we're talking about. So they can feel not only informed, but also proud and that the culture can shift through the, through those conversations. Because I learned a lot in this myself and I would say I am a modestly above-average informed citizen on school-related issues. And I still, the inventory alone was helpful to learn. And I felt great about, I felt proud hearing it. So let's not just talk about it in here amongst ourselves, but out in the community. And I really also want to thank committee member Mundell. I know this has been a really important topic of yours for several years now. And I hope that you feel proud of the work that's been done because you haven't let this slip through the cracks at all. And I really appreciate it and our chair as well for keeping it at the fore. And I, I think it's wonderful.
Member Srag.
Thank you and echo many of the comments from the committee. Thank you to the members that served on the committee for your, your expertise. And thank you to the presenters tonight. They were excellent. And I, I really want to recognize our student presenter, extremely effective presenter. And you, you clearly have a lot of enthusiasm and passion for these topics. And along with what member Sprague, I, I said, I, I hope. And along with what Member Sprague I I said, I I hope that you get to speak at at many forums on these topics because it's important. So thank you. I did have two questions, and I don't know if it's possible to bring up the, is it possible to bring up the PowerPoint slide? Or is that gonna be too much trouble? If it is, I I think I can still ask the question. I can, I can ask the question. It's it's related to Slide forty, the mental health professionals recommended versus current staffing, which I think is an incredibly important slide. And I I love that information. My my question is on the current, so for the school counselor, the social workers, the school psychologist, the school nurse, of the of the numbers of of current for that, how many of those are dedicated solely to the Bangor Regional Program is is my question?
So for social workers, there are three clinical social workers at the Bangor Regional Programs that are embedded in that number. They, if needed throughout the district, and this has happened, they would get a phone call and be asked to go serve in the district and would do so willingly. Yes, the three of them are. School nurse is shared amongst the district, so it's only a portion of her day that she goes to the Bangor Regional Program. School psychologist, it's a contract on top of what they contract with the Bangor School Department, so it doesn't impact the school department at all. And school counselors, they have a portion of a school counselor. Does that help?
Answers my question perfectly. Thank you so much. And one other question I had, and maybe it's for Member Mundell or or maybe for Superintendent Tager. I was just curious if there's been any thought about the future of this of this committee?
I think I can answer that one for you. I think a lot of them will come up to what the school committee's will is. And what we normally do is formulate our committees in November. So once we have the new election and a new new membership, we'll decide on our advisory committee. So it'd be the same with DEI and also with mental health. So I think you all have, will have input in that.
Thanks. And and lastly, I just also want to congratulate Member Mundell for her leadership and on this. And it's it's been, it's been great. Thank you.
Yes. Did you want to say something or no, you're good? Yes, please go ahead. I didn't know if that was a.
Yes, that was a, I want to thank everybody, little raised hand there. I have been just amazed by the work of this committee. We came together in February and we came up with some some goals that were very clear. And I think that helped us get good work done and everybody seemed to buy into the goals. We had a really wide-ranging group of people, experts in the community who know this stuff inside and out, as well as the teachers and the all the mental health staff at the schools who know this stuff inside and out. And we'd all just, I I feel like we worked together really well and just like went like gangbusters to get this work done. So I see this as, you know, step one. But it'll be up to the the school committee to determine what we do from here. So I just wanted to thank everybody out there and in the interwebs who might be watching, everybody who's involved. And thank you for all your work. It was a lot of work. I have one thing I want to add to that didn't get into the presentation, but I think one thing that the committee recognizes is that our 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 tasks sort of overlap with the DEI Committee. And one could say that mental health should be embedded within a a DEI framework. And I just want to to acknowledge that we we know that certain marginalized groups are at much higher risk of mental, mental health issues. And we're aware of that. We haven't, we haven't gotten to that yet, but I think it is something that we we hope to address, especially, you know, and if we follow through with the assessment recommendations, we'll have some data to show us, you know, what what separate groups are experiencing that, you know, might have extra needs. So I just wanted to to mention that, so.
Well, thank you all so, so much. I I too applaud each and every one of you and Member Mundell for spearheading this. I know it was Fast and Furious, Director Babbin and Principal Silk and all the, all of our wonderful presenters. I've heard a lot of bits and pieces from Member Mundell and Superintendent Tager, and it's just been wonderful. And to think that this is, was all put together in two months is just incredible. So thank you. And I promise you that we will meet in August to discuss all of this as we did at the retreat for DEI. We will kind of peel back all the layers and get, you know, in-depth details and discussions to really come up with recommendations. And we will circle back to all of you with where do we go from here and how do we implement this? Member Sectors.
One final question, and this may be for Member Mundell, based off of what you were just saying and then some of what I heard also from Landon today. Will any of this look specifically at the curriculum for sex education? And how that kind of can inform?
We did not look specifically at that question, but I'm I'm trying to think of where it would. I would think that would fit under best practices. And I do know, you know, having heard Landon speak, I think it is important that we include trans education, trans health in our in our health programs. And yeah, so I mean, there's so much that we didn't have time to touch on, and that's one really important thing. So thanks for bringing that up.
All right. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Moving on to a report of reassignments for year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, thank you. Joe Clark from grade two teacher at Vine Street School to grade three teacher at Vine Street School. Caroline Seguin from grade two teacher at Downey School to grade one teacher at Downey School. Ashley Sherry from grade one teacher at Downey School to kindergarten teacher at Downey School. April Miller from grade one teacher at Abraham Lincoln School to kindergarten teacher at Abraham Lincoln School. Patricia Hafner from grade two teacher at Abraham Lincoln School to grade three teacher at Abraham Lincoln School. Jessica Bickford from social worker at Point Five Fairmont and Point Five James F. Doughty School to social worker at Downey School. Lindsay Chadbourne from Point Five Social Worker at Abe Lincoln and Fruit Street School to Point Five Social Worker at Abe Lincoln, Fruit Street and Fourteenth Street Schools. Anne Chamberlain Small from social worker at Vine Street, Fairmont and James F. Doughty Schools to social worker at Vine Street School. Michelle Mason Mason from social worker at Point Five Mary Snow and Point Five William S. Cohen School to social worker at Bangor Regional Program. Peekaboo Moore from social worker at Bangor Regional Program to social worker at Bangor High School. Renee Perron from social worker at Bangor High School to social worker at Point Five Mary Snow and Point Five William S. Cohen School. Rebecca Tower from social worker at Downey School and Fourteenth School to social worker at Fairmont School.
Thank you. Next, we have a report of resignations.
I'm reporting the following resignations for the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Peter Sund, assistant coach, spring track, Bangor High School. Daryl Loring, point eight seven IEP coordinator, James F. Doughty School. Cynthia Fish, point three seven five IEP coordinator, Abraham Lincoln School. Daryl Loring, special education teacher, James F. Doughty School. Daryl Loring, cross-country coach, James F. Doughty School. Daryl Loring, track coach, James F. Doughty School. Lauren O'Reilly, boys swim coach, James F. Doughty School. And Amber Perry B., squad cheering, William S. Cohen School.
Thank you. Next, we have business action items. We have action items. We have the minutes for the regular meeting of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular school committee meeting.
Could I get a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Next, we have personnel. We have nominations for a teacher.
There are none at this time.
Okay. Next, we have twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Daryl Loring, special ed department head, Bangor High School. Daryl Loring, point five IEP coordinator, Bangor High School. Denise Semino, civil rights advisor, James F. Doughty School. Troy Varney, second-year A baseball coach, James F. Doughty School. Michael Corneal, B softball coach, James F. Doughty School.
Motion, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we have donations, which will be read by Member Sprague.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to Bangor High School from Education Maine and the Maine County of State and Maine County and State Teacher of the Year Association, participating and presenting webinar for main teachers, having a total dollar value of two hundred dollars. To Mary Snow School from Bangor Federal Credit Union, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of two hundred fifty dollars. To Fairmount School from Bangor Federal Credit Union, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of two hundred fifty dollars. To Abraham Lincoln School from Maine Community Foundation, cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of one thousand dollars. To James F. Doughty School from Bangor Federal Credit Union, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of two hundred fifty dollars.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you so much. And next, we move on to committee updates. We, any comments or questions from the committee? Number Sprague.
Well, I just want to say congratulations to all the students graduating this weekend. And and to the teachers and staff and family members, including our chair, has a child graduating. So I'm sure it'll be a very special weekend for your family. Congratulations to you and your daughter. And Principal Butler also has a child graduating this weekend, I think. And I'm sorry if I'm missing anyone else, but congratulations to all. I hope it's a nice, smooth event on Sunday.
Yeah, thank you. So exciting. Lots of great things, and we're unmasked, so we'll make it even better. So anybody else have a question or comment, Members Sectors?
So I'm, I I was just wondering if somebody could speak to the gender support plan that Landon had shared with us, oh, maybe six months ago now? And I'm just kind of wondering where that is, what potential obstacles there are.
So I believe there's a meeting that's already set up between Dana and Superintendent Tager. And so I don't know if you want to speak to that or just leave it at that. Okay.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so I actually have a couple of updates. First, for policy BCE, which is subcommittee. So at the retreat, and I'll speak about that here in a bit, but we decided to possibly have a policy committee or subcommittee. And and that will be formed in November, once the newly elected school committee members join. So at that point in time, so we'll probably discuss it before then. And then at the November or after the November election, then we will see who will be on that policy committee. So that's something that's exciting. And then we kind of discussed this at the retreat. Now, to the retreat, we had a wonderful first-time-ever retreat. It was something that was very, very special. I think many of our school committee members just kind of reiterated the fact of that it was so joyful to be together. We had a full day from eight thirty to three. And sadly, we missed Member Sectors and Member Sprague due to previous plans. But the rest of us were there. We had such wonderful fruitful discussions about everything. With, we had Steve Bailey from MSMA join us. And so we really got into a lot of the questions that we have, whether it was like about social media, you know, what our jobs and responsibilities are, et cetera. So that was wonderful, having that extra time with Steve Bailey. We did a lot of bonding activities, but we also got into into more of a deep dive with our DEI Committee reports and recommendations. And so I'm very, very happy to report that as a committee, we decided to move forward with many of those recommendations. And I will kind of discuss and to like break it down into the four subcommittees, give you all a quick update on those. So for the first one, our expanding equity, I think is what we're going to call it. That first committee, we have decided to accept the UMaine partnership that was proposed. And we are currently reviewing the MOU alongside the UMaine College of Education and working with Dean Penny Bishop on that. So that was really, really exciting as a school committee, excuse me, discussing that. And and we are excited to move forward with that. For the community involvement subcommittee, the mentoring program, as many of you know, and it is Superintendent Tager's baby. So that one is really thriving. It's going really, really well, and we hope to continue with that. Thank you. And expand on the mentoring program. Also, our student info packet, if you have watched the DEI Committee Report Out, that was such a wonderful project that was put together by one of our students, and that will be distributed and kind of expanded upon. It is a work in progress and but it's something that is very, very beautiful. And I think will be used in such wonderful ways with our students. The next committee is the hiring committee, and we decided as a school committee to have implicit bias training prior to our hirings. And so that's something that's wonderful. I know I was a faculty member at UMaine, and that's something that we did before and prior to each and every hiring. So that's something that is in progress as well. And also recruitment, what what does that look like in terms of outreach to, you know, universities that are local to us, University of Maine, Hassan, other universities or HBUs as well. So that will be wonderful in terms of recruitment and our outreach efforts. In terms of curriculum, that subcommittee, we will have thoughtful progression on that. We will have our principals lead the work and looking into our curriculum. We have also discussed a book study, and I am honored to lead that book study alongside Dana Cover-Bialer, who is our DEI director as well. And so kind of a deep dive into curriculum and kind of just, again, thoughtful progression on that. That's something that we discussed as a committee. We, through our curriculum subcommittee, we also have approved of a DEI statement that will be put forth and put on our website. And it's something that I really give a lot of credit and a lot of kudos to our our curriculum subcommittee because it took, you know, we basically fought it out. Does this word work? Does it not? And so there was a lot of disagreement. There was a lot of, I I won't say it was contentious, but you know, we did disagree, and that's that's a healthy part of any type of work like this. And so we finally came together and, mind you, we have students, we have administrators, we have stakeholders across the state that were part of this. And so a lot of big, big opinions, right? A lot of strong-willed individuals who are very opinionated. So to come with a statement that we all agreed upon took a lot of work, but it's it's a statement that we're all extremely proud of, and I would love to share it with you all. And so it reads, the Bangor School Department Statement Regarding Partnerships With Caregivers And Community Members To Create Schools That Value Diversity And Offer Equitable Opportunities For Learning. So and this is a part that we will have on there as our DEIB, which is Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Statement. We are fortunate to live in a community united through diverse perspectives, identities, cultures, backgrounds, family structures, faith communities, and ideologies. Most importantly, this diversity of perspectives brings abstract ideas close to home, creating opportunities for colorful conversations, mutual understanding, a deep commitment to respect in a, in school buildings where every voice matters. Recognizing the beauty of this diversity and responding to it through creating and enriching educational cultures is simply who we are at the Bangor School Department. The Bangor School Department intends to continue to collaborate with caregivers and community members to foster safety for all our students, to express their individuality. We aim to create school communities that further value diversity and self-growth of all our students. In order to foster safe, uplifting educational spaces for students to express their individuality and to learn to value diversity and self-growth and in alignment with the language from the Maine Department of Education's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Statement, the Bangor School Department holds that every student can and will be successful when school is a welcoming, safe place for all school community members to bring their rich lived experiences, perspectives, and identities into every aspect of their Bangor School Department experience. to bring their rich lived experiences, perspectives and identities into every aspect of their Bangor School Department experience. Social, emotional and behavioral supports are understood as critical prerequisites to academic learning. This is number three. All academic and non-academic programming is culturally sustaining and co-constructed with school and community members. Number four, curricula and materials reflect diverse perspectives, cultures and identities and include practices and ideologies of historically marginalized communities. Number five, schools ensure ongoing professional development and anti-racist, anti-bias and culturally sustaining practices, programs, curriculum, instruction and policies. Number six, staff are respected and regarding, regarded as knowledgeable about the ways to serve diverse student identities and engage with equity and inclusion within their class materials and practices. And last but not least, families and caregivers are respected and meaningfully engaged partners in their students' educations and are invited to collaborate and dialogue surrounding school culture. The district seeks input and expertise from stakeholders in working to create equitable schools in which we value diversity and self-growth. So this is our wonderful statement and it's one that I believe is one that we are all very, very proud of. So thank you. Thank you to the community stakeholders, the administrators that worked so hard with us on this, the, the the teachers that were part of this, the students and the school committee members as well. Any other, yep, member Mundell?
Yeah, not to belabor our two, two hour and a quarter meeting, just a quick question. The UMaine partnership, are, are, are we going to have an opportunity to learn, to hear from them about what the, what the partnership is or or maybe you could say a little bit about what it is? Cause I think, I think some of us know, but.
Share more with you. Right now we're working on the MOU. We, we agree that we want a partnership with UMaine. They are putting together an MOU and then Dan Stockford will look at it at our end and they're legal and then we'll share it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
But it is, it is progressing is all I would say at this point.
Maybe it's something that we can review or.
Happy to.
Yeah, later. Member Luciano.
I'm sorry, what's an MOU? Thank you. We, we use RFIs in my world. I've. Thank you.
Members Sarat.
Just very quickly, I, I want to say to Chair Hassan and thank you for your leadership on this and particularly your ability to listen to a wide variety of perspectives is, has just been instrumental to the success of this work. And I, I want to, I want to appreciate that publicly.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I do have a student committee member update from Caroline Sada. And unfortunately she couldn't be here today because she is also at the chorus concert at the high school, but she reports. The Humanities Academy's presentation night on Monday went very well. This was the first time the Humanities pre-Capstone and Capstone students were able to fully present their projects in person, and she really highlighted that to an audience on a night entirely dedicated to their hard work. This was an incredible diversity of topics and the recording of the event has just been posted on the school department's YouTube page. So I highly encourage people to check out all the presentations. Thank you, Caroline. And informational items, we have several important dates coming up. Sunday, June 12th, 2022 is our graduation. Please join us if you are able to do so, 4:00 PM at the Cross Insurance Center. Monday, June 13th, 2022, we have the first reading of the school budget with the city council at 7:30 PM here in council chambers. Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, we have another regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. Monday, June 27th, 2022, we have the second reading of school budget with city council here, 7:30 PM, council chambers. Wednesday, July 20th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. And Wednesday, August 17th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. Any last questions or comments from the committee? Last chance. No, it's going ones. Alrighty, adjournment? All those in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you. Have a good night.
Woo, that was awesome. Yay.